Welcome to the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District's Committee of the Whole Meeting on April 3, 2023. Time is now 6:30 PM. The New Jersey Open Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or agreed upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District Board of Education advertised this meeting on March 30, 2023, in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. This notice was sent to the municipal clerks of the borough of Madawan and the township of Aberdeen, and the Madawan Aberdeen Public Library. The notice was also placed on the district's website. Can we please stand for the pledge? Ms. Case, can we please have roll call? Mr. Ahern?
President.
Ms. Vilas?
Here.
Ms. Gershner?
Mr. Montone?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Here.
Ms. Burrell?
Ms. Warnicki?
Ms. Martinez?
Here.
Mrs. Scully?
Here.
Can I get a motion in a second to approve the correspondence to the board?
All motion. A second.
Okay, great. So, we're going to jump to the Board President's report. Welcome, everyone. I'm glad to see such a big presence tonight, which is great. Since our last meeting was only a week ago, we actually don't have a ton that we're going to update on tonight. There will be a community letter going out later this week, right before spring break. And we've had a few questions come up around unused snow days. And as noted on the district calendar, if you take a look at that, we're going to give them back in the following order, right around, right after Memorial Day, so May 30th, May 31st, and then the first, in that order. Strathmore will have a day they have to make up because they were out when the, when there was the water main break. But that's the order, and we're pretty sure at this point, we'll be giving all three days back.
Unless it snows.
Unless it snows. Or another water main.
I hope not.
Yeah. So with that, we want to wish everyone a wonderful spring break, and when we come back, we'll actually be starting fourth marking period. So now, we're going to move on to curriculum and instruction. Ms. Perez?
Good evening, everyone. Under curriculum and instruction, the following items are for action. We're asking for board approval under the items A, travel, B, other. That concludes curriculum and instruction.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
All motion. A second.
Thank you. Student Services, Ms. Perez?
Under Student Services, we're asking for board approval to take action on items one, two, and three, as listed.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
All motion. A second.
Okay. Personnel, Mr. Lehman?
Thank you. Good evening. We're to begin with a walk-in item. The board has the walk-in in front of you. The walk-in item is for action. Walk-in item reads, "We recommend," the superintendent recommends the following to be approved, "to hire one instructional assistant for the middle school, one hallway safety security monitor, part-time for the middle school, one pre-K teacher for Cambridge Park, which is a 9-1 start." That's the walk-in item. To the agenda for action this evening, we're recommending item number one, staff array changes, which are overloads of the high school and middle school, as listed. That includes the action section of the agenda. We recommend to the board for the regular action meeting to approve items A, B, C 1 through 6, D 1 through 4. That concludes personnel agenda.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
All motion. A second.
Okay. And there's no policy this meeting. So, we're going to move to finance. Ms. Case?
Finance, there'll be no action for this evening. However, at the next meeting, we will be looking to take action on items 1 through 12.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second? Sorry? Oh, right. No, sorry. No action. Sorry. My bad. Okay, then, we're going to move to questions and comments from the board on any agenda items. Ms.?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Lehman, the new hallway safety security monitor, that's a new position. Is there, are we going to get a, you know what I'm trying to say? Oh, wow. Well, like, up the position? Thank you. Up the job description? It's a new position, obviously, in, in the middle school, but there is an, there already is an existing...
So, it's the same, we're talking about the hallway safety security monitor, same position that already exists at the high school?
Right.
So, I certainly could share with the board the existing job description, but nothing has changed. It's just an added position to that team.
All right. Yeah. If, maybe you could just send that, and I was just curious, like, hours and all that stuff? Is that, like, listed on there, or...
It wouldn't be on the job description, but I can share with the board, when I share the job description, of what the hours would be in terms of the amount of time. How it gets used, how the position gets used in the middle school, is going to be up to the administration there, as needed, but it's definitely going to be, once a person starts, five days a week within the part-time hours. So, it's 60% of the day, so most of the time, the person will be there when students and staff are there.
Okay. And that was my question. So, if, let's say, we do, I mean, I don't know, 11 to 3, or 10 to 2, or however, my only, my only thought and/or concern there is that, obviously, when they come in in the morning, when they leave, there's that time where the kids are together, unattended, technically, so there's always room for issues. And/or, God forbid, for safety, in and out with the doors. Has that been thought of and/or addressed, or to have him there from beginning to end, or that doesn't, how does that work?
So, I can have a conversation with the principal and get a better answer for the board, so you can have the exact times when the person will be on the job. But yes, all the concerns that you'd mentioned in terms of safety for students, staff, hallway coverage, door monitors, it's all part of the position.
Yeah. I just was concerned about that, the time in the morning and the time in the afternoon, feeling that if we're going to put somebody in there, that I would like them to be there at our weakest times and, and stuff, so, thank you.
Any other board members with agenda questions? No? No? Okay. Then, we are going to move on to public comments on agenda items and additional matters. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on matters of interest to the school community. Individuals wishing to speak must state their name and municipality of residence. Comments are limited to three minutes' duration, but an individual may speak a second time after all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. All statements should be directed to the board president, and no participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner, with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to stifle comment on matters of legitimate concern, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others, under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of the legal ramifications of their comments, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. So, we know there are a number of you here tonight that wish to speak, so we're going to keep to the three minutes. Also, if, when someone speaks before you, if you feel like, you feel the same way, you can also say you support the statement that that person made, but we will give you your three minutes. And I think that's it. And if it's a personnel-related issue, just be aware that we can't discuss personnel in public. But we can hear the comments. So, if anybody wants to come to the podium? To start? Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elena Domeno, and my son, Michael Domeno, and Anthony Domeno are in MAMS Aberdeen School District. One is in MAMS, and one is at Lloyd Road. There has been a rumor, which I'm assuming is true after speaking with Mr. Jika, that potentially, the principal, Mr. Jarabek, will be leaving the school system. And I'm here in support of the principal. His involvement and participation with the kids every day is going to be a detrimental loss to the school. My son is moving on, so it's not like he's going to be still, he's going to be in MAMS next year, so I'll have two in MAMS. But because of my experience with Mr. Jarabek, I'm here in support, as well as, I guess, all over the road. I can see tons of teachers. So, I just wanted to confess that it's an issue that we're very upset about, because he responds, he emails, his concern and involvement is over the top. I've dealt with the other principal in the other district, and I find that Mr. Jarabek is, you know, it's going to be a huge loss. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Winona Jabaski, a teacher at Lloyd Road. I've been in the district for 29 years. Actually, like, I always said to Joe, like, if he leaves, I want to leave with him. Next year is my last year. I was really hoping he would stay, because he is by far the best administrator I've ever worked for. He is kind-hearted, he knows the kids, he knows our building, and to, like, change it now just doesn't seem right. Especially now, like, we still have 47, 48 days left of school. We have trips coming up, he knows how to run all of that, and it just doesn't seem like the right time to do those kinds of changes. And I really hope that we reconsider this, if it's something that's going to go through. As I said, I've been with a lot of administrators. I was at Strathmore for a while. I moved to Lloyd Road, very content, very good administrator, and I hope we just leave things the way they are, because everyone is happy. We just had a big meeting about morale, and how, like, people feel upset because changes get made, and now we're having a change. So, it's not really going to help much with our morale, so I'm hoping that it gets reconsidered. Thank you.
My name is Ashley Dorada. I have children in the district, one currently at MAMS and two of them at Lloyd Road. Please do not remove Mr. Jarabek from our children at our school. He's currently right where he needs to be. Unlike some principals at other schools in the district, he responds to phone calls, emails, takes initiative to handle issues in a respectful, efficient, and effective way. If he isn't in the office, he still responds and makes sure someone handles whatever the issue or question at hand is promptly. He has even called me back over a weekend, when I sent an email that I was worried about something. His answer was, "I saw the email, didn't want you to worry about it all weekend. I'm a parent too, and I get it." As some of you may know, my daughter went through Lloyd, and through her two years, we dealt with the pandemic, medical issues, family tragedies, et cetera. Anytime I ever reached out, he jumped up and took care of whatever needed to be done. He immediately took the initiative to set up whatever was needed to ensure her continued success in school. Now, we're back for the twins and have had the exact same experience. He is always prompt to handle any questions, concerns, and if he didn't have the answer and said he would look into it and get back to us, he really does. I have also had the pleasure to see him in action from inside the school while working as a sub or doing things with the PTO in Lloyd. He gets involved with the kids, stays on top of things that gets brought to his attention, whether it be a bathroom that was clogged, an altercation between students, a child that was just having a really bad day, and he gets involved. There are other schools within the district that need more attention and fixing. They can follow his example. He doesn't just say things, he acts. He follows through, he cares about his students, every single one of them. Please don't try and fix something that isn't broken. Please let him stay where he is and continue to benefit our children scholastically, mentally, and emotionally. If another school can benefit from his work ethics, his policies and procedures, the morale he upholds, the care he demonstrates for his students, staff, and families, the true dedication he shows, then have him run a workshop, implement some of what he does at Lloyd at another school. But again, please don't remove him. Please don't try to fix what's not broken at Lloyd.[806.82][806.82](Applause)
Hi, my name is Tracy Swarco. I live at 37 Indigo Lane, and I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Lloyd Road School. I don't have anything prepared, but I want to piggyback on what you said, both of you. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Lloyd Road is a transition school between elementary and middle school, and Joe and Christina run it like a fine-oil machine. They've got a routine down that makes us all feel at home, I can't breathe, and comfortable. He cares about us, he knows that we all have families, and that we all have needs, and he always thinks about us. He thinks about the kids, he thinks about the parents, and I just feel like he's in the right spot. And there was a big point I was going to say, and I completely lost my train of thought. I'm just, we're so beside ourselves about this, and, oh, I know that you're thinking, he's not leaving our district. You're not losing anything by this move. No matter where Joe goes, he's going to work his magic. But his magic is our magic, and he's what makes us a family. And by moving him, it's like this trickle-down effect that you, like, the repercussions of this is making everybody, we were all so sad today. Our morale was rock bottom, and I just feel like this is making us all feel like a number again, and not a family, and I really, really wish that you would reconsider this, because, like I said, Christina and Jill work so well together, and you don't find that often. It's hard to find, so, just, thank you.[931.13][931.13](Applause)
Mike Hoggie, 32 Wall Street Terrace, Keyport, I'm a fifth-grade math and science teacher. Before Joe came to this district, our building, Lloyd Road, was in a mess. We had, I'm not sure if you remember, principals that really didn't know what they were doing. And when Joe came, he established a culture, and that's what this is, this is what this is about. He has a team that believes in him, and he believes in us, and that's important. Bring somebody else in, we've got to learn that from a person, establish a new culture. We feel like this works for us. Please leave Mr. Jarabek where he is.
Alexis Fisher, I'm a fourth-grade ELA social studies teacher at Lloyd Road. I have a little bit prepared, not much. Floor board, I've been employed by Madawan Aberdeen School District for the last seven years, and it has been an absolute pleasure working here. It has been the best experience in my 20 years of teaching experience, working under Mr. Joseph Jarabek. I've had many different administrators, and he is top-notch. I have never worked under a principal who genuinely cared about the staff and the students in the way that Mr. Jarabek does. He's a positive influence for the families, students, and staff at Lloyd Road. He has a fantastic rapport with the students of our school. They look up to him. They smile when they see him. They're happy to be at Lloyd with him. He has the best intentions of those students at heart, and he works closely with the parents and guardians to make sure that their students are thriving at Lloyd Road. He takes every concern, every criticism, every, everything, into consideration, and is professional, and kind, and caring, and we know, whether it's professional or personal, we can walk into that office, and we will be treated with respect, and kindness, and genuine caring. And that includes not just our staff here, but our parents and our kids. And we've had kids walk into that room hysterical, and come out with the biggest smiles on their face, because Mr. Jarabek knows exactly what to say to those children, and how to make them better, or at least feel better, even if it's for that moment. And he may be that only light at that moment that could do it for them. Unfortunately, there's a rumor spreading that Mr. Jarabek will be removed from Lloyd Road School and replaced with another administrator. I can only hope that this is a rumor. The district administration has been getting a pulse on the morale of our schools. You've sent us surveys, we've had meetings, Lloyd Road had the biggest turnout, because we care. We care about our school. We care about each other, and we care about our kids. We work hard every day to make sure our kids thrive and reach the best of their potential. A movement would decimate our morale in our school. And I, so, personally believe Lloyd Road has the best morale in the district, and why would we want to do anything to change it? Personally, I've had some, I have my own personal issues, that Mr. Jarabek has been there when a real rough morning has come for me, and I had to walk into the room, and it helped me get through the day. And he does it for all of us, and he would do it for any one of you, and he would do it for anybody in this audience, and he would do it for any of our students and any of our parents. If this is what you're thinking, we can't, this is your choice. We can only tell you how we feel. Some people may be afraid to speak. I'm a straight shooter, I speak from my heart. Please, if there is any way that you can reconsider and keep our school the way it is, with our administration, with our morale, I can assure you that these people all behind me will make you the proudest administration and board that you have ever seen, because that's what we do at Lloyd, no matter what anybody might think or say. Thank you for your time.[1251.13][1251.13](Applause)
Nicole Klemish, a teacher at Lloyd, fourth grade, math and science, 20 Druxel Lane, Aberdeen. I'm going to read what I wrote. As a teacher and parent in the district, as well as growing up in this wonderful town I have always called home, going here, my husband going to Lloyd, I couldn't imagine Lloyd Road without Joe. When I came to this district seven years ago, I was nervous to start over after being in the same school for 10 years. It wasn't a healthy environment, and our leadership was not great. Joe and Christina welcomed me with open arms, as well as my colleagues that I now call friends, family. We're family. I immediately felt welcomed and comfortable as I began my new journey back in my hometown. We are a family. I mean, we spend more time together than we do with our own families. Joe is one of the kindest person, people I've ever met in my entire life. He cares about his staff, the students, the parents, and everything in between. The building would not be what it is today without him, and what he has done over the years. Joe is someone to confide in, feel comfortable with, and never do I not feel supported by him. This would be a huge loss to us, as he has built Lloyd, Lloyd Road School along with Christina, to what it is today. Kids are happy, comfortable, and teachers are happy because of the positive vibes that Joe always has. I think we just ask you to consider your decision, or reconsider your decision, as we are feeling a huge loss because of this. This is huge for us.
Hello. My name is Sharon Karnofsky. I've never spoken at a board meeting, and I'm freaking out, to be honest with you. I don't do this, and I hate every second of it. So, I, I live in the district. My husband's worked at the high school for 25 years. This is actually my 20th year at Lloyd Road School. My kids both went through Lloyd Road, my son's in fifth grade at Lloyd Road. In all my years here at Lloyd Road, I've had four principals. The principal I was hired by, 2003, was a wonderful person. When she retired, we unfortunately went through three years of, pardon my language, but pure hell, and two horrible principals. In 2014, we were given the greatest gift the staff could receive, and it was like the heavens opened up, and Joe Jarabek was sent down to Lloyd Road School. I've honestly never met such a wonderful person in my life. He's beyond a stand-up guy, and I really do not think you could find anyone to say a bad thing about him. He's always there for you, no matter what is even going on in his own life. Any questions that you need to be answered, he'll stop what he's doing and just answer them. His door's always open. He's the most approachable leader I've ever had the opportunity to work for. When my big day comes, along every year, Field Day, I've always just set up everything on my own with the guy I work with. And the first year he was there, I pulled up the school, it was like two hours before, before school started, and Joe's out on the field popping up tents that he bought on his own, just so the kids could basically rest throughout the day in the shade. I've made McFlurries with him at McTeacher Night. I've played with him in numerous staff volleyball games, and recently, I was on the court with him when we were destroyed by the Harlem Wizards. He shows up to every activity that Lloyd Road hosts with a giant smile on his face. And might add, he lives nowhere near Aberdeen, so he just drives up and back. I could go on and on about how amazing I think he is, but the part that makes me the most upset is what this will do to our students. Isn't this what we're all here working for anyway, is our students? This move will be detrimental to the children at Lloyd Road School. He has such a great rapport with our fourth and fifth graders, and we're so respected by all our students. He knows everyone by name, because that's just the type of guy he is. He's just what we need with this age group. He's fun yet firm, and is a great disciplinarian, which is unfortunately what Lloyd Road does need. I ask you, the board, just please reconsider if these rumors happen to be true.
Hi, Christine Maniscalchi, Lloyd Road School. I do not speak at meetings, everybody here knows that. I have been at Lloyd Road for 20 years. I've had many principals throughout my time in New York, when I worked there for six years, 29 years of teaching, and he is by far the best principal I've ever, ever worked with. Kind, caring, receptive, always there to help you. Whenever you have a problem, he's there. He will do anything for you. He will do anything for the students. He will help everybody in need. He's always there. He emails during the weekend, on a Sunday. He's amazing. Please reconsider your decision. It will be a detrimental effect on our staff for morale, which is what I thought we were here to talk about for the past couple of times we met, and you're making our morale go down. I don't understand why, I don't understand the reasoning for it, but please reconsider.[1582.25][1582.25](Applause)
Susan Cavellos, Lloyd Road, fifth grade, ELA social studies. I have been a teacher at Madawan Aberdeen since 2007, and before that, a teacher in the New York City public school system for many years. And over the course of my career, I've seen a lot of changes occur in curriculum, grade levels, and staffing within different buildings in our district. And I know firsthand personally what it's like to be moved from a building that you've grown roots in. As wonderful as everyone can be and is in our district, it is no easy task. As professionals, it's difficult to reset and start over unexpectedly, while also trying to hone your craft and be consistent for the children. That is why we're here. As educators, we go out of our way to build consistency for our students and community. It's what we need as well. At Lloyd Road, especially over the last few years, we have built so much. Our students come from all over the community, which is very different from the lower elementary schools. During this transition from lower elementary into middle school, it makes us a unique building. Our students are at such an imperative time in their lives. Mr. Jarabek is the nucleus of our school. He innately understands and can anticipate the needs of the children at this level. He is the center of it all, not just for staff, custodians, parents, but especially our children. Mr. Jarabek and Mrs. Olson have built a partnership, a wonderful rapport with each other, and it gives us confidence to go through our days and give our best. Some days, that's not so easy. We get asked a lot about our morale, and some days, it's just not easy. This didn't happen overnight. It took time. Mr. Jarabek and Mrs. Olson continue to work on how to best navigate the Lloyd Road unique departmentalization model. They have each worked to master the ins and outs of the departments and tasks necessary to find success in those subject areas, and with our children's needs. As a staff, we feel thought of and cared for within the foundation and consistency that we have finally been able to build, all with them both, and within our respective departments, after so many years of revolving leadership. Please, let's not forget, that's what Lloyd Road has been through. That's another thing that makes us quite unique. We thought we were finally past those years. Working together under Mr. Jarabek's special rapport for upper elementary students, we have finally found a formula that works for these kids. Our Lloyd Road students rely on the consistency of not only their teachers, but in how our building is run, and who their trusted adults are. Mr. Jarabek, again, is that foundation of our building. In New Jersey and all over the country, there is a mass exodus of educators leaving the field for various reasons. In our own community, it was suggested by Central Office Administration that our feelings are important and valued, that it's been stressed that we should come together, help to find the issues and fix what's breaking. We've completed surveys and intended meetings. We've tried to come together to help, and we were told that the door is always open for communication and repair. I'm saying this all now, that it just seems like mere suggestions, because nothing about this idea makes sense. this idea makes sense to us. It feels like a slapdown. How can you imagine this doing anything from around? Is this the way to make staff feel respected, heard, and cared for? Mr. Jarabek is a calm voice of reason. He treats us all with great respect, in which in of itself commands the same. He shows on a daily basis how very much he cares for our Lloyd Road students, families, and staff. This sudden move is such a disservice to not only our children, but more importantly, to him. What is this message that's being sent to him and to your staff and to our community? Let me clarify the message that we're getting. Once again, we are the movable pieces on a puzzle board that no one's actually, that's working with the children is able to see, and we're not allowed to have input on. And again, we thought we were past this. It seems that he is being made a casualty in order to adjust movements in other buildings. We don't know. It's obvious that Mr. Jarabek is wanted in any building. That's not even a question. But his home and his building is Lloyd Road Elementary. Please do not approve this unnecessary and disruptive movement. Thank you.
I'm a retired schoolteacher at Madawan Aberdeen, a member of the community. I never taught in this year, but I will tell you, my grandson was a student. And he always respected the difficulties, the problems, or the wonderful things that were going on. And as retired schoolteacher, when I was grown, I need to be there, you're here, because you're there, that always, truly, wonderful. He always respected where I came from and who I was. He would even allow me, because I'd be his first, decided to follow the rules, he would say, "You need to look around, look around." Because there are some things that are still working there. I don't understand, and I'm a member of this community for 40 years, why fix something that's not broken? I know there are other issues, and I know that things need to be fixed and changed, but this is not one of them. He works, he's charming, he's, he should be talked to, he'll have someone that needs him where I'm parent, to follow the rules, but know that I could be here and help my grandchild. Or sometimes, some young children who know me from the community, I would definitely cross the street, drop the school. I don't know why, because there are other problems, he needs to be, want to change. I think he needs to think about it, refocus. He's wonderful with his staff, wonderful with his children, they like, they want to be here with him, and I think that's a very positive thing. And I'm talking from experience, I knew from school, was different things, I was a senior teacher, and I think this is really, really funny. And I think as a community person, you need to rethink that, I know there are other issues, there are other problems. Please think about it and make a good decision. Don't fix what's not broken. Please stay where you're staying.
Would anyone else like to speak?
I'm sure you can all hear me, because I'm pretty loud otherwise. My name is Jeremy Zock, I live on Chain Lane, I have two kids in the school system. It's humbling to see the amount of teachers that have come out to support a principal. Humbling to me, and I'm sure it's humbling to all of you. Mr. Jarabek would not know me if I saw him in store or passing by. And that's a great thing. Lloyd Road went through the transition in leadership just before my oldest daughter, my daughter, went through it. And my wife and I, my wife being a 22-year teacher, three holes, were concerned about that change, about the constant change that was going on at that school. We even considered taking our daughter out of the school, specifically for those two grades of Lloyd Road, and then putting her back into the school system here now. However, I had some friends of mine who were in the district who told me about Mr. Jarabek, what he has been doing there. They told me about the initial strong support from a staff that had many tenured teachers, many teachers that had been with the school district for 10, 15, 20 years plus, and that they were impressed by him, which is a massive testimony in terms of his leadership. I spoke to my son, who was a 5th grader, who I remember being a parent teacher, who was a 5th grader at Lloyd Road School, and I said to him, "What do you think, Mr. Jarabek?" And he said, "I don't really know much about him, Dad, but he's always nice to me, and he's always nice to my friends, but my teachers really like him." That's just one anecdotal testimony for me as a person, as a father, and as someone who's been through this school district, with my children. And I'm here to tell you that with all of the support from the wonderful teachers at Lloyd Road, it would have been a massive mistake for my wife and I to have sent our children, to make the decision to send our children to a private school, because they would have missed out on the experience that they got on Lloyd Road. Unfortunately, you all have a very challenging job of what you were elected to do, and that is make the puzzle pieces fit where they may fit. However, if the rumor is true, and you are concerned moving them, I just like to remind you, lest we all forget, of what could be a daunting two years of COVID, and the consistency that our children so desperately need because of that pandemic that we all went through. Taking away, at the very least, a piece of consistent, positive leadership for the teachers and the children at Lloyd Road School would be further than a mistake.
Sorry, there you go. Okay, sorry. My name's Adrienne Schuing. I have, I'm a teacher at Lloyd Road, and I live in the community. I have been in this district for a little over 30, 30 years, so I have seen it all. And I don't need to stand up here and sing the praises of Mr. Jarabek, because obviously everyone has done that. I could stand up here for hours and talk about how wonderful he is. However, I just, I understand that things might be broken elsewhere, but please don't punish us to fix it. Please, I implore you, find another way and let Mr. Jarabek stay at Lloyd.
Thank you. My name is Irene Friedman. I sent my, I'm a senior in this, in this area, sent my children all through the school system. And I'm a retired school secretary from Monmouth County Vocational. I was the principal's secretary. I can never understand about the school boards in the past. You fix what's not broken. If there's an issue, take care of the issue, not move people around that are doing wonderful jobs, that teachers appreciate, that the kids appreciate. It's unbelievable. The last time I spoke here, I told the board that the person that was the superintendent was not going to stay. They went through it anyway, and he left in six months. Think about what you're doing. You're hurting kids, you have a wonderful staff. There's nothing more that you can ask. I don't understand if there's a problem in another school, in another area. Fix that. Fix that. It's been a long time since there's been an issue in this school district, and nobody takes care of it. Don't do it by moving somebody that's doing a great job. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just had one thing I wanted to add. Oh gosh, ready to go? I just typed it. The last few years, I have run all the fundraisers at Ravine Drive School. Some were harder to get approved as we had a lot of turnover once Ms. Janover left. There was a lot of uncertainty that was what was allowed, what's not allowed, what we can do, what we can't do, what the parameters were, and some couldn't take place because of the holdup. However, I've seen firsthand when running fundraisers at Lloyd, Mr. Jarabek gets right in. He literally helped me in the rain unload a few hundred pies from my car, because the custodians were held up at the moment, and he didn't want me waiting and standing in the rain. He approved a clothing drive for the school basically on the spot. His response was, "I'll try and support anything I can that benefits our children." He doesn't say the students, he doesn't say the kids. They're his kids, they're his children. Many of us think of a principal's office and get anxiety. When you were little, if you went to the principal's office, you were in trouble, and you were in more trouble when you got home. When my kids talk about the principal's office, it's, "I went to the principal's office today, me." I'm like, "For what?" "Oh, I got a ticket for being kind. I got to see Mr. Jarabek, and he gave me a high five." My daughter came home and told me she asked to speak to him today, because he always says you can come to him for anything. She saw something that wasn't nice, and she had to get involved. Mr. Jarabek told her he was proud of her. He is indirectly teaching her to be confident to speak up for herself, and in today's world and today's society, that is extremely important. Please reconsider your decision.
Anyone else? Well, I do want to say, on behalf of the board and everyone up here, thank you. I do appreciate you all coming out here tonight, after-school hours, giving your opinion, because it does matter. We do care about what everybody thinks, so hearing your voices is helpful to us, and actually, it's been very helpful. So, thank you for that, thank you for taking the time. You know, we aren't able, as we said, to talk about personnel things in public, but I do want to express that we are, thank you, that you came out. Then with that, we are going to, oh yes, so, action items, we need to take a vote on our curriculum and instruction A and B, Student Services 1 through 3, Personnel 1, as well as the walk-in item number one, which is the new hires, and I think that's it, right? Mr. Ahern?
Yes.
Ms. Filas?
Yes.
Mr. Montone?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Warnke?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Scully?
Yes.
Any board members with unfinished business? Any new business?
Yeah, I just have one item. I wanted to seek board approval for a book bin fundraiser, which is a recycling program that also raises money for the district. It involves finding a location for the bin, getting approval for that location, and then it lives there permanently, and basically, you get a check every month.
I would like to second that. I think it's a great program, and I think it's a great fundraiser, so I really like this idea a lot. So, I think we need to take a vote, right? Mr. Ahern?
Yes.
Ms. Filas?
Yes.
Mr. Montone?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Warnke?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Scully?
Yes.
Excellent. Any other new business? Ms. Filas?
I went to see Sister Act yesterday with my little girls at the high school, and it was fantastic. And after seeing the middle school production and now the high school production, I just feel like we are really supporting, truly supporting our students who love the arts here, and that makes me really proud that we are, we are who we are and doing what we're doing here. Thank you.
Okay, so then with that, we are going to move into executive session. Be resolved that a closed session be convened for the purpose of discussing privacy, personnel, and attorney-client matters. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. Although the board cannot guarantee it, the length of the executive session is estimated to be 60. 90 minutes, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and proceed with business. Action will not take place. Can I get a motion in a second to enter executive session?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.